Okay, I called to order this regularly scheduled meeting on the 34th City Council for December 6, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Just to remind everyone to please silence your phones as to not to disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Elswafi. Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Erin Burns.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item of business?
We have the invocation.
Okay, so, okay. So at this time, we have, yeah, that's correct, I apologize. Can you, yeah. Okay, I apologize, I just wanted to make sure. So at this time, we would, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Ken Paris.
Good evening, everyone. If I could, making mention to you that at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor David Nellis from the First United Methodist Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, I'd appreciate if you could stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, thank you for inviting me to share this invocation this evening. It's a great honor to be with you and to be with all these people. Let's pray, should we. Almighty and gracious God, we ask for your blessing upon our city of Dearborn and all its inhabitants, and upon all the thinking and all the words that we speak this evening, and all the decisions that we make, O God. We pray that they may be acceptable in your sight, so that we build a city worthy of your blessing. We pray this in the name of God. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, or would you like me to proceed?
Yeah.
We have an award, you don't need to say anything. All right, great. That's fine.
All right, so at this time, we have a couple of words from the council given out. So I'd like to read them into the record, and then we're going to ask the members to come up individually for a photo down here, with the council together, as well as the mayor. So recognizing the service of Philip Smith, which is a Marine Corps veteran, service officer, sincerely offering congratulations to Mr. Smith as our Dearborn Veteran of the Year. And Phil's service both from the Marines and the service officers, service.
Sorry. Service officers recognized and appreciated. We are inspired by many, he has inspired many, I apologize, and we are proud to present him with this valuable community award. So we do appreciate a citation from the council for Veteran of the Year. Phil, thank you very much for your service. All right. And next is dear to, dear to me as well, because as a small business owner in our family, that we had restaurants for many years, Alcamo's, a staple in our community, has been longstanding, especially Italian market in Dearborn, for over 50 years. We would like to recognize their hard work and dedication that have, they have invested, that they have invested in their business, and we, we have enjoyed all their services and wish them continued health and success in the future in their endeavors. And at this time, we'd like to bring forward the family as well for the Alcamo's for their 50 years. So we'd like to thank you, and then we're going to bring you forward for an, for an award. All right. Thank you, guys. So what we're going to do for our photos, we're going to bring up our Veteran of the Year right up here, and we're going to meet you up there with the council together, as well as the mayor. And the clerk, yes, thank you.
I can read it if you want me to. I mean. Yeah, okay. You know what I mean? I hear it.
Congratulations.
The taller guys. All right. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
We're selling some, dropping off Toys for Tots.
I know, I know, I heard. What's that?
I heard, one of the stuff that, 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 that.
Mike, you do great work at Toys for Tots.
There's the hoop rock.
Thank you so much. Probably recognize, recognize, I used to come pick up cheese for the buckets. Years, we wish you guys the best.
Blessings.
Definitely, yes, thank you.
I know how hard it is to keep it running that long.
Yeah.
It's a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I always just take the alcohol side.
He could still.
It should be a regular scheduled program.
George, you ready?
Yeah. All set? Mr. Clerk, can we have our next item of regular business, then?
Yeah, item number six is a public comment. Mr. President.
Okay. At this time, we are opening up our floor for public comment. It's reserved for members that have, yep, speaking cards, which I do have, which you can come up and state your name and address for the record. We have a kind reminder, the clerk will be keeping a time, there's a three-minute limitation. Remember that you can also speak at the end of the meeting, if you have something you'd like to speak then. And of course, during an agenda item, if you have an issue or actually a concern or comment regarding that item, you're also welcome to speak on that item at that time. So at this time, we have a couple of cards. There is some cards to fill out. If you did not fill up a card, please just come and stand to the side here, and we'll call you up next, okay? So first, we have Mrs. Pamela, Pamela Paula, I'm sorry, Paula Hamilton Stokes. The Stokes, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays. This will only take a moment. I just want you all to know that these last three days, I have taken quite a hit from the 980 retirees who are extremely unhappy about the discrepancy between Blue Cross and HAP when it comes to the deductible. I deserve it, I guess. I, it got by me, wasn't paying attention. Every, everything I saw, every video, everything I heard, kept saying $6,000 over and over again. However, when the paperwork went out, it was $6,600 for HAP, and the time period that was allowed for people to switch from HAP to Blue Cross, or whatever they wanted to do, had closed. So I just want you to know that I'm going to take the hit, but I don't think it was fair, and I think it needs to be addressed. And I have spoken to Amanda briefly about this, and that, that's pretty much it. I, what you don't know, I don't, I didn't know how aware you were, but now you are. I can't imagine you're not aware, I know you're aware, but that's really all I have to say, is it, it wasn't right, and we found out way too late.
Well, thank you very much, Paula, I appreciate it. I know the council has received, I think, two emails, so I think we do have a basis of what, what happened and the error that happened. So we do appreciate it.
FMA, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
Just a few things. One is the out-of-pocket maximum, not deductible. You said deductible on accident, it's the out-of-pocket maximum. So I just wanted to clarify what it was. There was a clerical error by the consultant that put out the letter talking about what the out-of-pocket maximum is. However, I want to mention just a few points. The current out-of-pocket maximum for all retirees on any HAP plan is $6,600, and the new plan is $6,600. And so it doesn't change for any current HAP retiree. The out-of-pocket maximum that is currently in existence will remain the, the, the out-of-pocket maximum in the new plan. That's one. Secondly, we put the full explanation of benefits into the budget, so although we got the clerical error wrong in the letter, we had it right in the budget as it was passed, and those explanations of benefits were shared with the entire, within the entire Retiree Healthcare Committee, I know that. I did double-check with some of your other colleagues that served on the Retiree Healthcare Committee, and they had it documented at $6,600. And so again, I'm not taking away from the error that was made by the consultant, but it was at least passed in the right manner, where Blue Cross is $6,000 out-of-pocket maximum, and HAP is a $6,600. Again, it's not changing for any retirees who are currently on HAP. It's the same out-of-pocket maximum you've always had, will remain the same. Lastly, regardless of the clerical error, what we've decided to do is actually offer a special enrollment period for those who did select HAP. We're going to open up another small window of time. If they want to switch from HAP to Blue Cross, they are free to do so. So we're working with the, the healthcare plans now, and so if they want to make that transition, they'll be able to do so with the accurate information. And so that is going to be made available.
Well, Mayor, I, I just want clarification, and so my understanding is the enrollment period is closed, you're, you're, you are now going to be able to open it, for how long is that going to be?
So we're working on a special enrollment period, those typically last between seven to 14 days, and so we'll, once we determine that, we'll communicate that with the, those who selected HAP, we'll give them the opportunity, if they want, to switch to Blue Cross. I think what's most important, though, is that the existing out-of-pocket maximum for anybody with HAP is $6,600, and that is not something that has changed.
Mayor, I, I don't think that's an issue at all. I, I think my concern is, is that we're opening up a box now and allowing, now we're allowing them to go back, so, and, and change it. So I, I understand fully that it, it was always $6,600, and it was, it was a mistake on the website. But the, the question is, is now you're going to give them, which I have no problem, but I want it concrete, because now since we're going to bring it up, it can't be wishy-washy. If it's 15 days, we need to know how many days, how many people, everybody in HAP are going to be notified via letter, or how? Because now we have to, since that's the policy that we're going to do as a city, I have no problem with it, but I'd like it to make sure it's crystal clear, so that I, we don't get more calls and said, well, I missed it, the 15th day was on Sunday, it was a leap year. Amanda?
To you, Council President, Amanda Brightman-Klenthan, Chief Operating Officer. A mailing will go out this week, we are intending to get it out the door tomorrow, if we can. What it will be is a sheet of paper that will give the final information. There will be a mailing that goes to our pre-65 retirees, and a mailing that goes to our Medicare retirees. Within that, there will be a front and back, just reminding them of all of the information that we provided them, as well as where they can find the most up-to-date information moving forward. There will be a color-coded card, also for all retirees, where they will be able to find the phone numbers that they need to seek any assistance with their benefits. On top of that packet will be a separate piece of paper around which there will be a red box that specifically says, for Medicare retirees who are interested and currently enrolled in HAP, if they would like to have the ability to change, it will tell them exactly who to contact to make that change, and they will have until January 20th?
There you go.
Sorry, December 22nd, from the date of the mailing till December 22nd, to notify us. That will give us enough time to work through. Anybody that has already contacted us, or the healthcare advocate, we will work with to get that information directly, and they will be able to make that change. Should they choose not to make that change during that enrollment period, every single year, retirees do have an option during open enrollment to make a change between their plans, that will continue to be offered, but this special benefit window will be open through close of business December 22nd, and they will still, though, be able to get their reimbursement account funds and everything else in place, so that we can have everything up-to-date to them before January 1.
All right, thank you. So you're going to notify all of the 900, or just the ones who have selected HAP?
Everyone will receive the same communication, if they are Medicare eligible retirees, regardless, they will all receive the letter that says, if you are HAP, you have the opportunity to change, should you want to.
Okay. And their opportunity to change is to, we understand the window is to what, Blue Cross?
The window is...
I understand the window. The other option is Blue Cross?
Yes, that is the other option.
And what's the deductible on that?
No, it's the out-of-pocket maximum.
What, I'm sorry, that's correct. What's the out-of?
$6,000.
So it's $600 less?
Yes, as an out-of-pocket maximum.
On the Blue Cross?
On the Blue Cross.
Okay, and I'm, I know there's other things, but I want to make sure, because these are the questions we're going to get, so I just want to make sure we're clear on it.
So then, frequently asked questions and information available on the website will be updated continuously as we move through this. I will also point out, sir, that the out-of-pocket maximum for Medicaid eligible, excuse me, Medicare eligible's, it would be extraordinarily rare for someone to ever hit that amount, given that the city is a secondary, secondary payer. However, we are going to acknowledge the clerical error, offer this one-time special enrollment opportunity for this year, but again, moving forward, every year retirees have the option to change their plans, should they choose to do so.
Thank you very much. Let me see if my, any colleagues have any questions, I really appreciate the clarification. Councilman Abraham?
And, and, just to confuse everybody, but when was the open enrollment period?
The open enrollment period ran from November 7th to November 23rd.
And the plan year begins?
The plan year begins on January 1, and it goes through December 31.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any of my other colleagues have any questions regarding yourself?
I just want to say that Amanda, it was, it was a mess for the last three or four days, a complete mess, and, and again, I, I take responsibility for not catching it myself, along with others. She has been, has gone over and above to speak to me, address the situation, correct what has to be done. The relationship that she and I have is very good, and she tries very hard, and I didn't want to sit down without making sure that...
Well, no, we appreciate that, Ms. Stokes, and we appreciate your service and helping, and, and I don't think it's anybody's fault, I mean, we did pass the budget at $6,600 maximum out-of-pocket. It was a typo, it was a mistake, but I'm glad that the mayor's willing to, to, if somebody did rely on that to make their decision, and we don't want them to do that for another year, this is a great, is a great solution, so I appreciate that.
And we're, yeah, it, the word will be out quickly, I have no doubt, so thank you.
We'll get it posted right away online as well.
Yes, please. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. The only thing that I wanted to mention is, thank you, Amanda, that, you know, we have had some communication back and forth between us, and I'm glad to hear what I heard already tonight, okay? Because I've fielded contacts from people, phone calls, emails, you know, what have you. So with this information in mind, and I appreciate the open enrollment, or that enrollment period coming to fruition, because that's very good for the members to be able to, the retirees to be able to have that option. But thank you for having that, and bringing it forward, because now I'm going to be able to communicate with people what the results are, so thank you for doing this.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. We do have some more speakers. Mr. Eric Cullum?
Councilman Mayor, good to see you all. I had a lot to say at first. The mayor and Amanda kind of stole my thunder, which was great, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But I would like to know if it's possible that, we constantly heard in the healthcare committee, in the sessions, everything, that it's almost impossible for anybody to meet this maximum out-of-pocket expense. Do we have a figure, Amanda, that when they say it's almost impossible, has anybody ever reached it? Do we have a number, like 10% people do reach that number? I, I guess, I would like to tell our members, I'm sorry, I'm the president of Police and Fire retirees, as you all know.
Right.
If we have a number, it'd be nice to be able to say, only, and I don't, I realize you can't say for the universe, but if we could say normally only 5% of people reach this.
To you, Council President?
Yeah.
As a response, we are happy to ask the healthcare consultant for a number to get us close. Catastrophic healthcare events, though, in this population, with the Medicare benefits and with us being a secondary payer.
Secondary payer, yeah.
You would have a significant issue getting that out-of-pocket maximum, but let me see what I can find for data, Eric.
Yeah, I, I prefer, Ms. Cullum, I prefer, I mean, I hate to, to guess, and the bottom line is that that number wouldn't change from last year, because it was the same amount, $6,600, as last year. So I understand that you're trying to get some information for your, from your members, but I don't want to pigeonhole us into estimating estimates on estimates. You know, so we are the secondary payer, and the amount is, it was a clerical error, and there's no difference if it was in '22 or in '23, it was the same $6,600 maximum for the second payer. So it's up to the administration, I'm just concerned that, you know, you know, where we say when that's not, these are all estimates of estimates, so I just want to be careful on that.
The, I, sir, to your point, I can't guarantee that the data is available.
Right.
But I, I will always point out that we will continue to keep our efforts focused on making sure we have the implementation.
And Mr. Cullum is welcome to do a survey, you know, Mr. Cullum is, has great communication email with his, with his, his membership. I, I think it would be easier for you to find out how many people paid $6,600 out of their pocket, they could probably tell you from the last years, because it hasn't changed.
Well, yes, it did, because last year was, I don't believe it was $6,000 for Blue Cross.
But, yeah, but we're not talking about Blue Cross. Mayor?
Well, we're strictly talking about the HAP plan. The HAP plan is $6,600.
And unfortunately, I had, well, not unfortunately, I had Blue Cross, so yes. I don't know of any of our members, but again, I didn't take a survey to say...
Right, maybe that's...
That we have any members that paid over $6,000 for HAP.
For HAP.
Right.
That's what I think would be the better survey, I mean, if you're interested, because to me, you have the membership, and that's the issue, is right there, because they have the choice now, with the mayor and the administration opening it back up, to go back to a different plan, the one you have, and have a $6,000 maximum out-of-pocket, as opposed to a $6,600. But, you know, as we seen from the letter, we received from the council, one of the people are very happy with their HAP coverage and stayed with it. But you're absolutely right, I mean, the question is how many people reach that threshold?
Right, and you're right, Councilman, with the fact that the problem becomes, we have two suppliers, Blue Cross, HAP.
Yes.
And as you well know, I mean, if you've had a doctor for 30 years, you want to stay with that doctor.
Yeah, 100%.
If the doctor's HAP, you, you get hit with the $6,600, thinking it was $6,000, and myself, the mayor, I was on healthcare committee, as you all know.
Yes.
But yes, the first number was 66, but then after that, the number changed to 6,000 for everything.
Right.
Our meetings, the, the printed paperwork, it was confusing, and now, even if people are allowed to change to Blue Cross, they're still now thinking, I have to go out of, away from my doctor.
Right. Right, but, no, no, you're absolutely right, but I think the mayor made it abundantly clear, Mayor, if you wanted to comment on it, that it didn't change, it was a, it was budgeted and passed on the budget, you were here at the budget at $6,600. It was a typo, it was a mistake.
I agree.
And the mayor's willing to let it be opened up, so that the customer, so the resident or the employee, retiree can make that choice, if they want to go back. But I, I agree with you. But let's say they decide they don't want to choose, they're not paying more than they did the last year, is that correct, Mayor?
Okay, I just thank you all.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page, that we don't go out of here and we'll get an email saying we're paying more.
You might, but I think we're on the same page.
I know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Like to address the council during our public, yes, sir. What you do, sir, no, no, that's okay, sir. What I'd like you to do is come up, there was some forms, but it's not a problem if you didn't get one.
Sorry about that.
No, not at all. You can state your name and address for the record, we have a three-minute time limit, sir, and the clerk will let you know when you have 30 seconds?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Joseph Liebling, I live at 2233710 East Street in Dearborn. I just want to express my concern about short-term rentals in the city, particularly Airbnbs, and particularly in areas that are not zoned for them. I now have an Airbnb right next to my house, is there illegally. I've informed the zoning administrator, they're looking into it, so I'm, you know, would like that process to work through, I guess. So we'll see what happens there. I'm also concerned about Senate Bill, Senate Bill 446 and House Bill 4722, which I'm sure you're aware of, which basically strips any control from cities over regulating short-term rentals. I, I contacted the Michigan Municipal League, from what they tell me, no one, there is no municipality that supports that pending legislation. So I'm thankful, if you're, if you're opposing this legislation, thank you. I know the concern now is, does it come up in, does it come up in lame duck and get passed in the middle of the night, as sometimes happens? I'm also concerned that our state senator is a co-sponsor on that bill, and I, I talked with some people, Senator Santana, I believe, from what I look, is one of the co-sponsors.
Yeah, Mr. Joseph, I will, I will have the mayor take this as well, but we want to address the local aspect, so I, I think the mayor is familiar.
Sure. Okay.
Because you're in, no, hang on, I know, hang on, let me finish.
Okay.
You indicated that the building department told you there's, there is...
So I talked with the zoning administrator.
Yeah, who's that?
Mr. David Brunel.
David Brunel, okay, what happened there?
So he, and one, one of my neighbors also contacted him, my understanding is that he's turned it over to code enforcement, so they're looking into it. I contacted him probably a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, I'm going to, I want the mayor to respond, but I wanted to make sure, because my understanding, and our, our director is here, is that we do not have an ordinance that supersedes the state ordinance, which, so I don't know why they would tell you that there's something illegal.
What, well, that's my work, okay?
But what are they turning over, then?
So what they told me was that the zoning, the zoning designations are, I believe, RC, RD, and RE. My home is in a zoning designation of RA, single-family residential.
Okay, so...
So the other thing that I understand, in an email that I got, is that in order to get, to put in a short-term, short-term rental, an Airbnb, if you will, you have to put in an application, go to the zoning commission, get that approval, and anybody within 300, within 300 feet of that property also has to be notified.
Okay, so I'm going to, Mayor, were you ready to speak now? Because I, I do see our planning and zoning administrator, our, our planning and our building director on the back, because I'd like to know, too, because I'm unaware of this.
Yeah, so, I see where you're going with the commentary. Here, here's what I'll say.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the zoning administrator provided you, and so I'll have to verify this, because we currently don't have any ordinance on the books regarding Airbnbs, that's one. Secondly, there is no state law on Airbnbs, nothing had passed. I was in Lansing today, I'm obviously a member of MML, and a member of their Urban Corps League of Mayors as well. This is going to be a very lame, lame duck to our benefit, and so I think tomorrow might be the last day, potentially, where they're just doing farewell speeches. That's a very strong possibility, so you might have nothing moving for us this year, given the outcome of the last elections and the, the change that's going to happen in January. We are currently working on an Airbnb short-term rental ordinance as a city, and will hopefully be presenting that to council in 2023. As it pertains to the process and the rules and regulations that someone provided you, is what the process is for signing up a short-term rental here in the city of Dearborn, that would be news to me, because we don't have anything on the books, and so I'll run that back through economic development. I'm not sure how...
Excuse me, after the meeting, I have the emails, if you'd like me to...
Yeah, no, so we're going to get that email, for sure. There's no doubt.
Did you go directly to the zoning administrator?
I did, I called him on the phone.
Okay, so, okay.
And then, I, I don't remember the, the person who responded on my email, but I have, I have a copy of the email.
That'd be great, if you can share that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
But to that point, we're going to try to figure out what the appropriate regulations are within our city on short-term rentals.
Okay.
And if there's an issue, as it pertains to any sort of nuisance or anything of that, as it pertains right now, please work with our neighborhood liaison, who can work with the department, to make sure that that is taken care of, from a nuisance perspective.
I absolutely will, because like I said, I'm right next door to it, there are people coming and going practically every day that we, we've had parties there, there was one group of men that would come back at night, and then a carload of women shows up and leaves at 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning, it's like, you know, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
And I will say this, that Commander Bazi has been very good about it, I've contacted him about it, and those kinds of things, so I appreciate it.
You have all the right points to contact.
Well, I'm doing, I'm just doing, you know what, this is my fear, and Councilman Herrick knows this, I don't want to be... As it pertains to the process and the rules and regulations that someone provided you is what the process is for signing up a short-term rental here in the city of Dearborn, that would be news to me because we don't have anything on the books. And so I'll run that back through economic development. I'm not sure how.
Excuse me, after the meeting, I have the emails. If you'd like.
Yeah, no, so we're going to get that email, for sure. There's no doubt.
Did you go directly to the zoning administrator?
I did, I called him on the phone.
Okay, so, okay.
And then I, I don't remember the, the person who responded on my email, but I have, I have a copy of the email.
That'd be great if you can share that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
But to that point, we're going to try to figure out what the appropriate regulations are within our city on short-term rentals.
Okay.
And if there's an issue as it pertains to any sort of nuisance or anything of that, as it pertains right now, please work with our neighborhood liaison, who can work with the department to make sure that that is taken care of from a nuisance perspective.
I absolutely will. Because like I said, I'm right next door to it. There are people coming and going practically every day that we. We've had parties there. There was one group of men that would come back at night, and then a carload of women shows up and leaves at four and five in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
And I will say this, that Commander Bozzi has been very good about it. I've contacted him about it and those kinds of things.
You have all the right points to contact.
Well, I'm doing, I'm just doing, you know what? This is my fear, and Councilman Herrick knows this. I don't want to be the cranky old man on the block, you know? I know, I know a lot, I know a lot of residents, they're really upset. We have some new neighbors. He has six, six children. He said, if I didn't know this was an Airbnb, I never would have moved here.
If you can please provide us with that letter, connect with our neighborhood liaison, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Joseph, we just have a couple of comments from the colleagues. Then at the end, we have, sitting in the back, Mr. Jordan Tordi.
Okay.
And Kaylee Bianchini, is she right? Yeah. I'd like you to get with them and give them those emails because we'd like to find out who was sending you that information.
Absolutely.
And Kara's going to get that information as well. So like, right now, I'd like to see, Mr., Ken Paris has a question.
Thank you, Council President. Just, just a comment. I don't want to speak for everybody here on council, but myself, I've been to a number of neighborhood association meetings and the Dearborn Federation of Neighborhood Associations.
Yeah, I talked with them.
Yeah, so there's a number of people that I have talked to personally and actually have gone out and seen some of the homes in question. So you're not alone. And it does have my ear. I brought it up, that possibility of having study sessions and looking into an ordinance well past this last year, even in the prior administration. I have brought some of those concerns forward. So I appreciate the mayor's comments that we will be looking at this further.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I know the wheels are slow. They're not going as fast as some people may want. I understand that too, but I understand your concerns. I think a number of us do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And I apologize if I gave you bad information. I'm just going on what was sent to me from the city.
You didn't get that information.
That's my point.
Right. Councilman Abraham.
I guess, and I appreciate the administration looking into this. I just have two questions that hopefully you can roll up in a response. And that first is, only certain business activities, if, and they're very limited, are allowed in residential RA. And so I'd like to look into, if somebody is operating a full-time Airbnb, I would, I would say that's a business, not an accessory use. It's not a hobby.
Right.
And I'd like to understand how, how we can use the existing ordinances that are on the books now to perhaps prevent this from going on. And, and secondly, when it comes to rentals, we have pretty strict rental registration ordinances. And I'd like to know how we're making the distinction between short, you know, a short-term rental and a rental. I, I don't remember that distinction being in the ordinance. A rental's a rental.
Right.
And if you're, hang, hang, hang on. And, and if, if you're renting out your primary residence, I'm certain our ordinance requires that to be registered. And of course, it can't be homesteaded. And there's all sorts of implications with inspections that go on.
Inspections, yeah.
So in that light, perhaps we have some tools in our ordinances that we can use short-term. And obviously, we, we will embrace stricter requirements that come forward at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Liebling, for coming in and.
Oh, you're welcome.
And talking with us about your neighborhood, that affecting your neighborhood. We have heard about it in other neighborhoods. And as Councilwoman Paris said, I, I've talked with residents and been by some of those as well. And when the Michigan Municipal League sends out an alert, because they do, as you mentioned, none of the cities and municipalities are interested in losing their ability to regulate short-term rentals. And that's the fear of the legislation that is being proposed. So the MML lets us know that we should let our legislators know it's coming up for a vote, better get out there and better vote against this because this is not what our residents want to see. And so I'm going to continue to do that. I've, I've been doing that the last probably year and a half. And my colleagues have heard me talk about it as well. But it's really helpful to hear residents talk about specific examples of what's happening in their neighborhood. I didn't know it was happening right there. So thank you for coming in tonight.
Come by sometimes.
Appreciate, yeah, yeah, I will. So, and, and I was going to also, Councilwoman Abraham, address the other thing I was going to say about regulating rentals, so. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much again for coming in tonight. I appreciate you raising this concern. And I appreciate your commitment to not being the cranky old man on the block. But in all seriousness, this is a really valid issue. And Mayor, I appreciate your, you know, looking into this. I know the council in the new year will be on top of this as well. Can you tell me, though, Mayor, do we have like a tracking system, you know, when residents call or come to a meeting, do we have a list of properties that, you know, are being utilized in this way at this point? Or perhaps?
I don't have an answer for you at this point in time.
Okay, okay. Just a thought then for the future, because I, you know, I hear this from residents across town. And as the administration, as the council looks into this in the new year, I just think some type of tracking system to monitor, you know, these complaints or these notifications perhaps would be certainly useful. And on a personal note, I'll be transitioning to Lansing in the new year. So this will be, it's certainly on the top of my list and, and on my radar. So I'll, we'll talk if you're still here at the end of the meeting. I'm happy to give you my contact info, yeah.
Well, so you know, you can go on the Airbnb site. Type in Dearborn and you'll see.
Yeah.
Where a lot of them are based on what timeframe you put in.
Sure.
Those types of things.
Yeah.
I mean, and in my instance, it's listed as a historic home in the historic neighborhood. We are not, we're just outside the Ford homes. It's not a Ford home. So, I mean, even, even that's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up to par.
One thing, one thing I can tell you, sir, as you heard from my colleagues, I don't want you to walk away feeling there's not much you can be done, even though the state, right. And as my colleagues alluded to, there's Norris ordinances. We have our, we have building ordinances. And Councilwoman Abraham laid it out as far as inspections of rentals. So there's many things that we can do to make sure that you have orderly neighbor, other than being, either that, even though if it's an Airbnb at this time.
And, and I've done that. I, I've made calls to the city. Also, Airbnb has a neighborhood complaint.
Oh, go ahead.
So I've sent into them and I encourage the other neighbors. You know, if you're a ways away, it's not too bad. But in my neighborhood, the homes are, they're no more than 15 feet apart. Anybody, you know.
Yeah, it affects you.
I mean, I, so I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to be the cranky old man. I understand it in the summer, sometimes people are having parties and 10 o'clock as a noise ordinance might be a little early. I mean, it's still light out. But when you have things going on until 1:00, 2:00, and 4:00 in the morning, that's great. And I can hear them in my home with my window shut.
No, definitely, absolutely. And we have.
I don't think anybody would want that in their neighborhood.
So make sure, make sure. Thank you. Make sure, Joseph, you talk to our inspector. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kara, make sure you get his info.
Council President, the half-hour timeframe for the public timing has passed.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, we will continue onto our regular agenda item. Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item of business?
Item seven is resolution in need of offer and support, approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Offered by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilwoman Burns. Any questions or comments on these items? Mr. Clerk, can we have a rule call vote?
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Erin Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
The resolution, seven, six yeas, resolution passes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we are now going to continue onto the regular council agenda item.
Item number 13, resolution by Herrick and Hamud, approving the minutes of the regular meeting of November 15, 2022.
Okay, is there any deletions, modifications, or additions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, unanimous rule be attached. Mr. Clerk, at this time, I'm going to ask for a unanimous rule to suspend the rules for one minute. Is there any with, is there any, how would I say it, Jeremy? Is there any offer to suspend the rules?
Offer.
Offered by Councilwoman Herrick.
Support.
Give me a support. Support by Councilwoman Hamud, and we're going to suspend the rules. At this time, we have Councilwoman Leslie Herrick that would like to make an introduction for a project. I'm going to turn over to Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. We have some special guests here tonight in addition to the ones that we recognized earlier. I'd like to welcome Troop 1148, Scout Troop 1148. They are based at Snow Elementary School. And their Scoutmaster, Tim Bloom, are here. They're sitting in the audience and they're on camera right now. If you guys want to wave, they'll see you out in TV land. They are here for the citizenship and the community merit badge, one of the requirements for a merit badge. So we are glad that they're here and learning. And we hope that this is just one of many steps they will take in becoming contributing members of our community as, as they grow up here in Dearborn. They're welcome to attend our meetings anytime. And if you hear, if there's something that concerns you about life in Dearborn, like you've heard a couple of our residents talking this evening, please feel free to come and ask questions or contact us in our offices if there's anything we can help you with as, as you grow and live here in the city. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. And I just wanted to, again, recognize the troop and thank you for coming here. We also have, if you needed something for signed or anything, if that's unnecessary, we do have that as well too, just to give you an agenda. So I'll make sure that they give you one before you guys leave if you're not going to attend the whole evening. So thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number 14, ordinance on the table. Ordinance number 22, that's 1778, and ordinance to amend Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 2, Section 9-33A entitled Real Estate Fees, resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, and this request is to change the fees associated with applications. Number one, to extend the time to close the, the sale of the city-owned vacant lots. And number two, to extend the time to begin construction. The proposed amendments on ordinance Section 9-33A would increase the aforementioned fees from $250 to $500 respectively. Any $500 fee for extension for the time to begin construction with an additional 1% of the purchase price, multiplied by the number of months of extension will also be added. It is recommended that these proposed amendments be adopted to ensure the ordinance mirrors the proposed land revisions to our land sale guidelines coming up as well. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1778 entitled An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by Amending Article 2, Section 9-33A entitled Real Estate Fees.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, rule call vote.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Erin Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number 15, ordinance number 22-1779, an ordinance to amend Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by adding Section 18-364.1 entitled Parking of Tarp Vehicles Prohibited: Exceptions, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Burns to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous rule be take, will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment to this ordinance will result in an addition, in addition to prohibiting tarp vehicles, the term "tarp vehicle" will be included as any vehicle as term, as the term defined in Section 18-124 of the Code of Ordinances, regardless of whether it is operational, registered, affixed with a license plate, or that is covered completely or partially with a tarp. The parking prohibition is subject to exceptions, such as the parking of vehicle covered within a form-fitting or semi-form-fitting vehicle specifically designed to protect the exterior from elements or historic vehicle, and may be parked for a time not to exceed 72 hours, provided that the vehicle be parked by the owner's residential driveway or parking pad in a lawful manner. Pursuant to zoning ordinance Article 4, the parking of vehicles covered with a tarp or tarp form, semi-form cover, is allowed when it is subject to land that is used as permitted storage in direct connection with a legitimate business purchase, such as a body shop or business regulated as such. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues or from anyone else? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1779 entitled An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by adding Section 18-364.1 entitled Parking of Tarp Vehicles Prohibited: Exceptions.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have a rule call vote?
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Erin Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 16, ordinance number 22 dash 1778, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2 dash 383 of Article 3, Division 2 entitled Planning Commission Resolution by Councilmembers Perez and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment will ensure compliance with state law by officially designating the Finance Director or his designee with an annual preparation for a capital improvement fund, CPI. The amendment establishes a framework for a CPI steering committee whose members will be selected by the mayor. The CPI steering committee will provide an opportunity to make more efficient use of city dollars by allowing for different departments to collaborate and propose capital expenditures and ensure those expenditures are consistent with the city's master plan. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments from my colleagues or anyone? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22 dash 1780 entitled An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2 dash 383 of Article 3, Division 2 entitled Planning Commission.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erin Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 17, ordinance number 22 dash 1781 introduced by Councilmember Burns, synopsis and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 7.03 of Article 7 entitled Site Development Standards Applicable to Specific Uses.
Okay, the proposed ordinance revisions are a product of several years of work, of discussion with the city councils and members of the public on where permit, I'm sorry, where you can permit primary caregivers and qualified patients for cultivation of marijuana per state law. The proposed amendments would permit the cultivation of medical marijuana caregivers and establishes the following main regulations. Be within an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, a detached dwelling that is located in RA1 family residential zoning district. Number two, it will be limited to 22 square feet or 25% of the gross floor area, whichever is less.
200.
I'm sorry, it says 22. Yeah, I apologize, it was 200. It says 22 on mine, does yours say 22?
We'll take 22.
All right, no, that is correct, it was 200. Mine says 22, just for type, no problem. It will be, thank you, though, I'll repeat that, it will be limited to 200 square feet or 25% of gross floor area, whichever is less, prohibits cultivation outdoors nor within attached garage or any accessory building such as a shed or a similar structure, cannot be located within 1,000 feet of a protected use designated, must be registered with the city and comply with annual inspections after due consideration in a public hearing on November 14th of this year. The ordinance amendments were recommended by our planning commission. This is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, I know that we did have, for myself, we did have outside counsel look into this, so, Mr., I'm sorry, Jeremy, Mr. Romer, can you speak a little bit to that on the process, on what, how this was vetted so we got to this point?
Yeah, so, once Kaylee from planning and Brad from my office completed review after the study sessions with the council, we had a contract with, I don't know if you recall Foster Swift?
Yes.
We sent that over to their attorneys that handle marijuana cases specifically to determine whether things like the buffer or the restrictions that we're imposing within the code as well as the zoning ordinance comport with current law and what the likelihood would be as far as challenge. We received that feedback from them. Obviously, it's an attorney-client communication, but what I would tell you is that what you have before you comports with current law as far as the restrictions that are in place, positive reviews. There were a couple of housekeeping matters that they gave us as far as clarification that you'll see come before you after the first reading, but nothing substantive, no substantive changes from them. So, that's the process we used. Once you solidify your code and zoning ordinance, they provided their feedback in what you have before you as their final product after review.
Okay, Mr. Romer, I believe you weren't here for the committee, the whole, but your deputy, Mr. Mendelson, the council did review the Foster-Swift memo, and we're in concurrence with adopting all of those, so those are the changes that you're indicating will be adopted for the final reading?
Yeah, correct, we're in the process of incorporating those into another draft, which you'll have with the typical blue highlights, but again, those were what I'll characterize as housekeeping matters, nothing substantive.
Okay, and then, Mr. Romer, just a little clarification for the residents. Right now, just so I don't get mixed up, we had, the City of Dearborn has not opted in and has actually opted out, so can you give us the difference of the two other ordinances which are not in play today, but I don't want to confuse these with the medical marijuana, so?
Yeah, so, the primary caregiver that's before you, you cannot opt in or out, you're required to follow the law, I guess I'll say, with it. So, what's before you is how we zone where these facilities, I guess, or caregiver facilities can take place. The other one is recreational, and then you also have, I'll actually defer to my planner, I'm sorry, because she's dealt with most of these, and I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to recall them specifically, there's dispensaries, I'm sorry.
Dispensaries.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I want to make sure.
We've opted out of medical marijuana dispensaries, we've opted out of recreational marijuana dispensaries. What's before us is the caregiver grow, you can't opt out or opt in, you just have to follow the law and permit it somewhere.
Right, and that's why I want to make sure it's clear, Mayor, because one of the laws, we have to actually designate, the other one, we don't have to do anything.
Correct.
So, I want to make sure the residents don't come and say, they ought to understand, medical marijuana and aspect as far as dispensaries are not permitted in Dearborn, we have not opted in, nor have we on the recreational facilities.
We've opted out, correct.
This is, Mr. Romer, what, 12 or 13-year-old law, is that correct? The caregiver?
Something like that.
Yeah, it's over 12 years old, so I just want to make sure the residents know, it became a situation where, over the last council, there was places popping up, and when the law started to come to the favor of the city where we can find areas to zone it, we decided to do that, and that's what this is doing. So, I just want to make sure it's clear for all our residents that the city is not opting in to any of those other facilities. All right, any other questions or comments from my colleagues?
I'll go after that.
Councilman Abraham.
I know it's only first reading, but this just came to me. Going back in time, I'm going to apply something that we learned during the smoking of tobacco ordinances and the infamous hookah lounge permits.
Right.
One of the problems we had, if I recall correctly, was that there were a lot of laws on the books about how to regulate tobacco smoking, and we ran into instances with the hookah lounges where there were claims that they were not smoking tobacco. And one minor detail was, we did not have the ability to test the product to prove it was tobacco or not tobacco. And I just want to make sure we don't bump into something similar here where if there's a nuisance and we have all these ordinances and the person says, "I'm not growing marijuana", does law enforcement have the ability to enforce and test to prove that it actually is marijuana?
Mr. Romer?
Yes, they would, under inspections, that's how they would be able to do that. Now, as far as testing the actual product, like going into the home and taking it and testing it, no, you need a warrant for that.
You need a warrant, you need a lab to test the actual product.
Yeah, the inspections allow you to go in to determine.
Short of sampling product.
Well, and I guess that's my point, is that the tobacco laws didn't allow us to sample and test unless we knew it was tobacco, which is kind of silly, but that's the quandary we ran into.
So, just to be, just to be clear, the ordinance before us is about growing the plant, and so, if they were to walk in, you could very clearly see it's a marijuana plant or not a marijuana plant.
But if they claim it's not, do you have the authority to do anything?
With a warrant, you would be able, you'd have to demonstrate probable cause to get the warrant, but that's the purpose of the inspection, too, is you can go in and take a look and kind of gauge what they're actually doing within the premise.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Mayor, would you like to?
Yeah, I think, you know, just to summarize the ordinance that's before us, when my administration came in, we did three things. The first two was, we quickly, permanently opted out of permitting dispensaries in the long run in the City of Dearborn, as kind of those original ordinances had sunsets temporarily, so we took the permanent opt-out of all dispensaries in the City of Dearborn. So, those were the first few decisions. The third is the ordinance before you. We heard the concerns of residents last year about ensuring that there was a large enough buffer between any sort of caregiver grow operation and any residential homes. And so, what we did was, we took what was advocated for, the 1,000-foot buffer from many protected zones, that includes green spaces, parks, schools, and religious institutions. And then, we took some of the learnings from other municipalities, from Grand Rapids, Sterling Heights, and several other cities across the state, and we put together what we believe actually addresses all of the concerns of residents and provided the map, which actually, you know, very, you know, if I'm very straightforward, provides very limited areas for where somebody might be able to grow for caregiver purposes. So, we think this is actually a strong solution that adheres to the concerns of residents and provides the best possible solution and pathway forward. So, I think it's a big win for residents, especially those where, under the original ordinance where it was zoned industrial, were disproportionately impacted and had the majority of grows located right next to them. Under the current ordinance that's moving forward, hopefully today with your support, we also address those concerns, and there's no more inequity placed in the caregiver grow ordinance. So, just wanted to kind of speak to that.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, we do appreciate it. Anybody here from the public would like to speak on this item?
We will.
Oh, are you still on?
Yeah. Before we?
Councilman Hamud?
Kind of to Councilman Abraham's point, and this actually, maybe, it's on the next item, but these are kind of similar items. There is like an odor aspect of it where they can actually test the, like, levels of admissions and things like that, so we are regulating on the nuisance, too. Even if we don't technically, legally decide what plant it is, the nuisances, the nuisance aspect of it for like neighbors and stuff like that, if it does end up in a neighborhood, would still impact our ability to regulate it without necessarily having to prove that it's a marijuana plant. So, there are some, I think, aspects of it that we regulated it where you don't have to prove exactly what it is, because if it's bothering someone, we're going to do something about it regardless. So, I think that's kind of helpful, that's one of the things that we've done. So, I mean, we'll talk about it next item, anyway.
Okay, Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank the public that, over the past two years, has come in and worked with us and looked at the maps that we've been studying as we've worked really diligently to try to find a happy, a medium that we can live with as far as keeping these facilities out of the neighborhoods and, of course, away from schools and playgrounds, yet still comply with the law. As the mayor said, we have to allow it somewhere in our city boundaries, and it really has been a challenge to find common ground where we can come up with this ordinance. So, I appreciate that the public has given us input and that the administration has worked diligently to bring forth this proposal, and I will support the first reading tonight, but I did, we do have a study session, we're supposed to vote on this next Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, the second reading, and that is a special meeting of the council because our next regular meeting isn't until after the new year. And I just do have a little bit of concern because this has been such an important topic to so many residents in the neighborhoods that they're concerned will be affecting them, that we are not waiting to have this at the next regular council meeting, that I'm just concerned about doing it during a special meeting at this time when we're kind of slowing down for the holiday season. Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing up those points. Just to that point, one of the reasons is, the moratorium that exists on the existing ordinance expired at the end of the year, and so, for us, we're also not trying to extend the moratorium once again, putting us into a legal debacle, and rather try to address the ordinance once and for all, as opposed to trying to buy ourselves a little bit more time.
Do we know, well, do we know that by extending it for a short period of time is going to get us into a legal debacle?
I don't know, but I'd rather not, I'd rather just, I think, most of the residents, we've communicated with all the residents that have demonstrated concern around this, and we have between now and then also communicated the ordinance is coming up for a second reading, and we're speaking to publicly. I know several in the audience, and they're connecting through their WhatsApp group chats and such, so I think they're well informed about what's coming.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, I understand, and this is a council initiative, and the council, if we do want to, as the body on the 14th decides that they want to table it, you're more than welcome to do that, we have a procedure. This is not the mayor's doing, we wanted to make sure that we put this to bed, and this was a council scheduling issue, so it's not for really debate. On the 14th, if we feel that it's not ready, we can make a motion to the proper procedure and take it off like we've done in the past. So, just wanted to make sure, this is not to skirt anything, it's a public meeting, and that's, it's publicly noticed, and it's been going on for years, again, like I said, like I said last council, this is a 12 to 13-year-old law, this is nothing new. And when, I just want to correct some things, when we say, we have to create an area, we don't have to create an area. We could have left them in their homes, but we decided to create an area to protect the residents. So, we could have done nothing like we did for the last 12 years, but we decided that it was time with the case law to try to make it a little bit tighter so we could not hurt some of the residents. So, if, on the 14th of our special meeting, if the council feels that it's not ready to go forward, that's the opportunity to do it. It's not up to the mayor, it's up to the council. So, I want to make that clear. Any other questions or comments from the public on this item? Councilman Hamud?
Just kind of to address a few of the points you were discussing.
Yes.
This medical caregiver ordinance will be based on our study of state laws, one of the strictest in the whole entire state, and part of that is thanks to feedback that we received from residents. So, we are going to be very much taking into account the input that we received, so I think part of the reason why we're moving faster now on it is because we're very confident that we've received a lot of public input, we're still getting public input, you know, that's why I'm not too concerned about moving forward with it, because at this point, I mean, I think we've had, I can't even remember how many study sessions we've had on this exact topic, yeah.
That's this term, that's this term.
This last year.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, right.
Prior to that, there was more.
Exactly, so I think we've really, really studied this to death, and that's why we're ready to move forward with it.
Right, I appreciate it, and then, Mr. Romer, just to add more on to that, this has also been helped by the recreational passing by the state initiative, and my saying of that also indicates that a 21-year-old person, the resident in the house, can plant 12 plants right now without a medical license, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, and I was actually going to bring it in.
Let the attorney answer, so we can get this, everybody on the record.
That's fine.
That's correct.
So, that's my concern, too, is with the passing of a state law, it made it easier even for us to make this, make this decision at this time. So, any other comments from my colleagues? Any comments from, anybody from the public? No?
You made enough comments.
All right, well, this is the first reading, so, Mr. Clerk, can I have the first reading?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number 22 dash 1781 entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 7.03 of Article 7 entitled Site Development Standards Applicable to Specific Uses Resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Perez to table the ordinance.
All right, Mr. Clerk, your unanimous roll will be attached to table ordinance. Mr. Clerk, the next item?
Yeah, I believe we have somebody that wanted to talk to, about something on our consent agenda, item number 10.
So, Mr. Romer, it was, it was a card that was, I didn't notice, was part of the consent agenda item. It was an item 10, how can we handle this procedurally?
Well, procedurally, the clerk mentioned that the time period expired in any event, so we would move to the tail end.
Okay, so just move to the tail end?
Yeah, you only have 30 minutes for the first public comment period, anyway.
And it was already consented agenda item, it's an item, that's why I'm concerned.
Well, yes, they can still speak to the consent agenda at public comment, but with the period expiring, that first period is over.
I understand. Okay, just wanted to make sure, but procedurally, anything said by the person or anything the council wants to do can be done on that item at that time as well?
Well, on the consent agenda, for council members to talk about that item, they'd have to pull it from the consent agenda, but that, just being on the consent agenda does not prevent a member of the public from speaking to the item.
All right, thank you very much. So, Mr. Clerk, thank you, I just wanted to go get a clarification on it, thank you, Mr. Romer, so we can proceed?
Yes. Item number 18, ordinance number 22 dash 1782 introduced by Councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by adding Article 15 entitled Medical Marijuana Caregiver Facilities.
All right, the proposed amendments, ordinance amendments to impact Chapter 5, Article 15, Section 5, 1384 for the Code and ordinances, among other things, the proposed amendments limit caregiver cultivation to owner-occupied homes and residential districts, and number two, it prohibits new caregiver facilities in non-residential areas, and three, creates a legislative process for registering caregivers and requires inspections for code compliance. The proposed amendments retain regulations found in the existing ordinance and that address potential impacts on marijuana cultivation, including but not limited to odor control and mitigation compliance and code regulations, regarding, including nuisance regulations prohibiting outdoor cultivation. The most recent amendments were reviewed by outside counsel, as we indicated previously, and there is a $250 registration fee for residential caregivers as well as miscellaneous fees generated for permits inspections associated with residential cultivation. This is the first of two readings. Any questions or concerns on this item? Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so, I think this item is kind of more what I was also talking about, so this affects not only medical, but just general growing of marijuana in the city, so a big part of this also includes general regulations that the city is going to have around the cultivation of marijuana, which we, you know, we're kind of very broad or not having too much regulatory power previously. So, one thing I did appreciate about this was the nuisance aspect of it. So, recreational marijuana is still legal to grow based on state law, however, we will be regulating the nuisance aspect of it. So, that way, it doesn't bother neighbors because it will likely happen in RA zoning, so the goal would be that, you know, if there is an odor issue, for example, you know, you'd call ordinance inspection, and then they'd go figure out how to regulate and resolve that with the owner of such plants or whatever. So, I think this is actually really well-written, and I think we've done a lot of work on it, and so, we'll see how it goes on this first cut, because it's like a very, very, very thick piece of paper, so, thank you.
Lot to go, yeah. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 22 dash 1782 entitled An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by adding Article 15 entitled Medical Marijuana Caregiver Facilities Resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Perez to take, to table, to table the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, your unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item 19, ordinance number 22 dash 1783 introduced by Councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend Chapter 2 by expanding Section 2 dash 369 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn entitled Commission on Disability Concerns.
Okay, the proposed amendment would remove the residency requirement for members of the Commission of Disability Concerns and allow for commissioners that work within the city. A maximum of four members may work for a employer located within the City of Dearborn by expanding the membership to include both residents and individuals who work in the city. The city will increase the number of prospective members for the commission. This is the first of two readings. Questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick.
As we discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting on Thursday, I have concerns about having nearly half of the members of any commission be allowed to be non-residents, and I understand that we're saying working for employers here in the city, but at this point, this commission, I'm not sure that we've done enough to advocate for this commission, that we have openings on it, and to work with the commission to make sure that they have the resources and the encouragement to meet regularly and have a quorum when they need to vote on items. I don't know that we've put the time that we need to as an administration to make sure that they're successful. I don't think we need to take this route at this point to have four non, potentially non-residents serving on this commission. I understand that we have some employers who actually specialize in assisting folks, families, and individuals with, in the disabilities, and they could provide valuable information to assist the commission or the administration, these experts at these employers, but I don't believe that they need to have a seat at the table as far as being a commissioner and appointee in order to provide that guidance and expertise. I'd feel much more comfortable if it was maybe two people representing employers in Dearborn rather than four, serving on a commission of nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. I'll start by saying, you know, I don't have serious concerns about having folks who are non-residents on a commission. I do think actually, you know, ideally, that would lead to some diversity of thought based on a wide variety of lived experiences, and I think it might help us get out of our bubble a little bit. And so, I do think that that's helpful, and I appreciate, you know, the potential for that, which really hasn't existed in the past. So, I think that's important, and I think specifically with certain commissions and So, I, I think that's important, and I think specifically with certain commissions and what their focus area is, having that diversity of thought and having people who are perhaps not residents could lend itself, I think, to greater success. I will say though, on the other hand, I think something I've seen, not just in the last year, but really my five years on council, I feel like the conversation around commissions, appointments, the process, the application, all of it, it tends to be a source of either confusion or consternation or both. So, my thought, and I would just, you know, leave this as a recommendation on the table, perhaps for the new year, I know I won't be here at that point, but I, I think maybe something along the lines of like a temporary committee, I know council per the charter can't do, you know, permanent standing committees, but perhaps a temporary committee bringing together one or two members of council, some folks from the administration, to really wrap their arms and their brains as well around this process, to get a, a more, I think, detailed, long-term process and approach developed would be helpful and might help allay some of these concerns that we just tend to see, you know, coming up once in a while. And I understand, you know, the mayor's office is, you know, the team that interviews and is the appointing authority, but given that council approves or confirms those appointments, really at the end of the day, it, it is a team effort. So, a thought and something that I, I'd like to put out there just for consideration moving forward.
Yep, thank you, Councilwoman Burns, well taken, and as you know, on the last council, I was recommended to the administration to provide us an attendance record, because I do believe you're absolutely right, that the charter is very clear that we are the confirming body, but we have to have a reason. I think me and you ourselves both have voted on one issue where there was a reason to vote against someone, and we asked for, the biggest problem that the administration had indicated in the past was attendance, and so we asked for attendance if there was an attendance issue and to go from there. So, everybody knows, these are volunteer positions, and we ask people to come and give us their opinion and, and put a lot of time in, and a lot of us have been on commissions before we were on council. So, there is some meaningful work, and there is some concerns on, the process is a little concerning, because we really just confirm them, and we have to have a reason not to confirm them, in my opinion, that's my opinion on it. So, there is some, there is some confirmations that we have or points that we have, where we actually put our own person on, it's a different story there too, which I do think we should have a process on that as well. So, I definitely think it's something we can look forward to in the future. On this item though, I wanted to make sure, Mayor, the Commission on Disability Concerns, so for me, I think, I wanted to just make sure, for me, I think this is pointed, because a lot of disability concerns happen with ADA compliance and issues that are relatively centered in the workplace. So, I was wondering if that's your genesis for this, because I am, I am for having membership, and someone that works in the city of Dearborn, I think, is a valued asset, as the councilwoman had indicated, is also a good light, but I think a lot of these concerns do arrive within workplace environment, is that, is that my correct understanding?
That's one of the reasons, the more primaries, we've been engaging with a lot of organizations that deal with folks who might have various disabilities, and so having, for example, the voice of STEP or PACE, or stakeholders such as those organizations, access, several, at the table alongside residents, helping ensure that we have the appropriate ordinances and such on the books, would just make for a more meaningful environment and policy development. To the earlier points of Councilwoman Herrick, there are a few appointed commissions that are majority non-residents. The one I would give you is the Dix Verona Corridor, where you have more stakeholders who reside in the area, but they're not residents, for example, but they're businesses within, within the city. Similarly, what we're seeing here is the majority would still be Dearborn residents, but we would supplement with some of these stakeholders who we've been building relationships with, that I think can begin to add value to the conversation, especially given that they serve a majority Dearborn population. So, I think it, it helps in that way.
Okay, Councilwoman Herrick?
And I, I appreciate that, that's why I mentioned there are organizations, and I actually serve on two committees with STEP. So, we have residents, out of 110,000 or more people living in the city, we have residents who are working with those organizations or receiving services from those organizations, and I think we just need to tap into the residents more to get the word out that these opportunities are here to serve on this commission and on others. And through social media, we reach a certain portion of the population, but I, you know, we have other ways of reaching folks as well, some of it is through CD TV or cable television shows, but there are other ways that we should be reaching residents, one being the back fence newsletter, or whatever you choose to call it, but a, a direct mail piece that goes to households that don't participate in social media, because those households are totally missing some of the messaging that we have from the city, whether it's opportunities to participate on commissions or attend events, or be up to date on what our current ordinances and laws are, or participating with our charter commission, which is asking for public feedback right now. We are missing a portion of the population just by not having a printed communication go to households. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Paris?
I just want to make this a little bit brief, I don't want to belabor what we're talking about right now and keep on going on with the meeting, but I have to echo what Councilwoman Herrick is saying in particular, we all know right now, our city website is dysfunctional. I mean, and we know it, and we're going to, you know, make improvements to that, but a case in point, just recently, we had a very good gathering of people to recognize volunteers and the boards and commissions that we had, you know, at the Performing Arts Center, and it was excellent, they hadn't had that in a number of years, just even recognizing some of our volunteers. I mean, it was great.
Yeah.
You know, even this morning, we had the junior, you know, city beautiful commissioners that were brought onboard by the City Beautiful Commission, and that was a great event. So, we're taking positive steps here, but if you, even right now as a resident or even an employee, if you go on the city website and go under boards and commissions, you know, under public meetings, you can't find any information, there's only like seven commissions that are on there that even have any minutes or have any agendas, and some of those are years old, you know, that you can't have a central location to be able to find things. So, until we actually start taking care of our own matters that we can have some input into to make that information viable and easy to look for, for our own residents, it's hard to get volunteers, because they don't even know, need, know where to look. You know, it's not easy even to find boards and commissions just to even look for information.
Right. Well, Mr. Mansour is here, if he'd like to come up, Mr. Mansour, the IT director, because I thought this was clear, we had covered this early on in the term, that our website is functioning as an organization, a .org, were you here when we had that meeting? And not a governmental entity, and the mayor and the team are... So, Mr. Sharjah, would you like to come up, because the question has come up regarding the website, and I, I thought that we were all very aware that we are in the process of updating it, so could you give us...
I'll speak to it.
Mayor, if you'd like to speak to it, because he was indicating that if he changes one thing, the whole thing would crash, because there were ULs individual. Okay, go ahead.
So, if you go to, we typically have banners now on the front page where you can just click very easily, and the application will come up to submit if you want to participate about other commission. We changed that when we came in. As it pertains to revamping the website, we're going to embark on that endeavor, when we embark on that endeavor, that's a nine to 19-month process, and so, our city website is very dilapidated, it's very outdated, there's 1,400 pages, and so, if I were to list out the priorities on what pages are the most important, unfortunately, what information is available about the, you know, X and X commission is probably falls at the bottom of the totem pole, because there are so many other pages that just are more priority as it pertains to what residents need to know at this point in time. So, we're going to embark on that endeavor, but that's a, that's a, you know, a long-term fix, and so, what, the resolution, the ordinance before you is about diversifying the folk we have sitting on this commission to also hopefully amplify its impact, and I think I don't want to lose that.
No.
It's not simply about, we can't find residents to participate, that might be one problem that we have, but we saw, you know, and we've been doing a great job actually in diversifying the candidates we've brought forward on a variety of boards where we've never seen it before. But what we want to also ensure is that the impact is meaningful. You know, I don't care for a commission of nine folk to come together if they're not sure in which direction they should head into. They might, you might have a family member or a friend that's impacted or who has a different disability that they live with, but having some of these experts who deal with residents from our city each and every single day can really provide us a various outlook. If you're uncomfortable with four, maybe we can go down to the three, I, I'm open to that amendment, if you'd like to do that right now.
Well, the amendment, Mayor, that amendment was made at the COW at three, and it was not supported, so I, I would appreciate if we keep the agenda item. We didn't want to get off track, but I thought it was very pointed that questions are being brought up regarding IT when I thought it was plainly identified that there's been an issue with our website from day one. So, Mr. Sharjah, would you like to speak to that? That's the concern.
Sharjah.
Sharjah, I'm sorry, will you speak to that?
So, good evening, Council, Mansour Sharjah, the IT director. As the mayor pointed out, our current website has a lot of historical data, 1,400-plus links, anytime you touch or update a link, you may break hundreds that we may not be aware of. Therefore, the decision has been made to completely build a brand-new website that reflects the city, and it is diverse services to residents, and that's what we're working with currently.
What's the timeframe on this, so it doesn't come back yet next week? What's the timeframe on this aspect? What do you think?
For the new website, minimum nine months to a year and a half.
Nine months to a year and a half, and what about the designation that the city is currently designated as .org as opposed to .gov?
So, we have secured the .gov, and some of the emails have begun to transition.
Already?
So, for example, I'm now mayorhamud@dearborn.gov.
Well, that's why you're not getting my email.
I know. We're piloting it with...
He still gets, both emails work.
We're piloting it with some of the appointees first, but we're eliminating the @ci.dearborn. So, that's already begun to rule out, the official URL of dearborn.gov
Yes.
will not be used until I get a new website. The current website is not worthy of the dearborn.gov URL.
Fair enough, Mayor, I just want to make sure we put that to bed, so about a year and a half?
Yes.
Okay.
For complete build-out for a new website.
Okay.
We have a lot of base infrastructures that we're working on also to upgrade, to reflect a new change.
You're going to see a proposal soon, I'll just tell you that, you're going to see one soon.
Councilwoman Herrick, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mansour, perhaps I'm wrong, but I just pulled up the website on my phone, and I looked at it over the, the last couple days too, I think the link to that really nice dropdown menu of, on the homepage, it, it's a Google form that makes it really easy to apply for a commission, I believe it's gone. So, can you take a look and, and put it back up there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, because it was a very nice addition.
Absolutely, anytime you're missing a specific link, please let us know.
Okay, and I just noticed that, and like I said, in the last couple days, and we had it, had...
Just to know, some of the banners we swap out depending on what's happening, because you can only have so many banners.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we typically limit it to two.
That was a very nice one to have, and I couldn't find it on the commission page either, and I think before it might have been there, so...
Only 1,400 links, so, they're not...
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, any other questions or comments on this item before we have the first reading? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 22-1783 entitled an ordinance to amend chapter 2 by amending, expanding section 2-369 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn entitled Commission on Disability Concerns, resolution by council members Abraham and Paris to table the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll will be attached, table the ordinance, next item, please.
Item 20, resolution by council members Burns and Hamud awarding a two-year contract to the Kuja Law Firm, PLLC, most responsive and responsible proposal, in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for indigent counsel services, valid January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and this request is required and necessary to maintain compliance with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, MIDC standard 4, council at first appearance or other critical stages, the Kuja Law Firm will supply the services and representation necessary to comply with the standard 4 regulation, the law firm will provide representation for adult indigent defense at the 19th District Court, and the contract is for a two-year award period with up to two-year, up to two-two-year options of renewal, the funding is provided 100% by the MIDC annual grant of $50,000 per year, immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Item 21, resolution by Paris, council members Paris and Burns awarding a three-year contract with two one-year renewal options to Kent Communications in an amount not to, not expected to exceed $138,450 for printing and mailing of tax bills and assessment notices.
Okay, purchasing on behalf of the Treasury Division and the city assessor recommends the award of a contract to Kent Communications Incorporated for printing and mailing of tax bills and assessment notices, the value of the contract is to not exceed $138,450 for an initial three-year contract, which will be charged on an annual basis, the contract shall have a term for three years with two one-year renewals at the same pricing and terms and conditions as well. Any questions or comments on this item? I know there were some questions and some emails received at the committee, the whole, I think they were all answered, any questions or comments on it? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Item number 22, resolution by council members Burns and Hamud authorized on a cooperative contract purchase from GDW government through the state of Michigan MyDeal program in the amount of $70,554.10 for 55 Meraki wireless access points and licenses, and requesting immediate effect.
Or currently, we have two outdated wireless controllers for all of our 30-plus sites, these two wireless controllers are built in mixed, mixed, or sorry, are with mixed access points, I'm sorry, models that impact connectivity speed and coverage for our users throughout the city building. The purchase of the 55 Merki wireless access points will allow us to upgrade all our sites with newer technology that is more secure, reliable, faster, and a cloud-based system. This is a one-time purchase of $70,554.10, and will, will improve our Wi-Fi throughout the city buildings, DPW parks, recreation, council, and the charter meetings as well. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Hamud?
I'm excited for better Wi-Fi in the council office.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, definitely the Wi-Fi has been an issue, so we do appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item number 23, resolution by council members Paris and Burns awarding a contract for restroom renovations at police headquarters by GNJ Services LLC, lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount of $99,900, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the restrooms in the police headquarters are outdated and in need of a, a complete renovation, they are used for public and will be redone to ADA compliance and family-style restrooms, this will provide a more professional, comfortable environment for police personnel and visitors, and it can, and it is consistent with the renov, renovations, I'm sorry, of the position one command center kitchen, and both that were completed last year. The requested amount is $99,900, it is, it is requested that it is authorized to award immediate effect to GNJ Services. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item 24, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick awarding a, a three-year contract with one two-year renewal option to ESO Solutions, most responsive and responsible proposal, in the amount of $198,013 for a records management system starting January 1, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the evaluation team on behalf of the fire department recommends a word of a contract to ESO Solutions for the implementation of a new fire department records management system, electronic reporting is required by state and federal agency, and this program utilizes the department, is utilized by the department for reporting incidents, inspection records, data and statistics, and personnel management training records. The requested amount is $198,013. The contract is valid for three years starting January 2023 with a one, two-year renewal option. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Item 25, resolution by Herrick and Hamud extending the caregiver moratorium through February 28th, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the existing moratorium was initially adopted in March 2021 and, and defers to the acceptance review and approval of applications related to non-residential caregiver operations, is currently scheduled to expire December 31st, 2022, if the moratorium is allowed to expire, the adoption of proposed revisions that were read earlier in this meeting, the city will require to begin accepting and reviewing applications under the existing current ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Hamud?
Uh, in light of the fact that we're planning on passing all this stuff next week, I think we could pull this item if Councilwoman Herrick's okay with that.
Well, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Romer?
Well, I'll pull my support if she pulls her support.
Yeah, well, that's, but I think, I think it's, I think it's a clean-up, Mr. Romer?
I, I mean, if the council desires, it was put forward by the administration, we can certainly pull that, if that's the case, but yeah, he would be limited to pulling his support.
Right.
Right, procedurally, but, Mr. Abraham, I, I think there's more, more issues than Mr. Abraham.
I guess earlier we stated we didn't want to do the extension, and now it's in front of us to vote on it, so I'm, and I'm going to hold you, Mayor, you said you're never going to bring an item forward that you're not going to fully support, so here we are, which one is it?
So, you can obviously tell I was out of town for 10 days. That's what I'll say. I, I had, the administration brought it forward as a safety net, I guess my staff brought it forward as a safety net, I had no intention on bringing forward the extension of the moratorium.
I had no intention on bringing forward the extension of the moratorium. For me, it was about getting the job done before end of year and not having to re-extend the moratorium.
If I could, my suggestion on this item would be to table it till the special meeting hosted for the fourteenth, and should we run into problems with passing the ordinances that are before us, the fallback could be to
Pull from the table.
Pull this from the table and vote for the extension until we could properly incorporate the ordinances that are in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, either way, I don't have a problem with the extension, because to me, my biggest concern is that this meeting has been noticed and scheduled for the fourteenth. I know we have time to change it. And on the special meeting, if we decide not, if for some reason it doesn't pass, then we would have to then deal with that at the same time. That's why I think this is a good cleanup aspect. It just covers us, but, Mr. Romer, you're the attorney. How would you, how would you advise your client on whether this should be kept or not?
So as the mayor spoke, I'm probably the culprit that snuck this in here when he was on the, you know, gone.
It's no good.
Because I, I don't want
Risk of Hearse.
Yeah, I played the safe bet here. I don't want you to run into an issue with not having the second reading before the December 31st date, which is the date of your moratorium. So that, that's why I had it on here, but I understand you could do it Councilman Abraham's way as well, and just table it, see what happens the fourteenth, if you have second reading.
My preference is you don't have the safety net, obviously making you act.
Right. Exactly. Well, Councilwoman Herrick has some.
No, I, I just have a concern that for our meeting on the fourteenth, I know there was already a concern that we may not have a quorum available, and if that were to happen, then we would be stuck, because you couldn't vote on either one of them.
We'd force you to come in.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we'd force you to come in.
Well, yeah, so I, I think we should proceed and just put this in there as intended as a safety net.
And I agree. I don't see any, I don't, well, Mr. Romer, what would be the negative of having this in and passed? What would be the disadvantage of passing this?
Talking about marijuana in 2023.
No, no, the moratorium doesn't affect. I mean, it would become null, it would become, you know, you know,
Correct.
obsolete on the fourteenth.
There's only spiritual negative impacts, that's all.
From a law standpoint and ordinance, you only have a disadvantage here. If you approve this and it's there, great, you have a safety net, if you're gonna call it. If you don't, then you're gonna have to call a special meeting at some point between the fourteenth and the end of the year to have a second reading or extend the moratorium.
This could severely just trouble my holidays.
Councilman Hamud, does that make sense?
So my question would be, but if we pass, if we pass our new law on the fourteenth, then
Doesn't matter.
This is moot.
Correct.
So the new law has the moratorium removal in there?
No, no, no. If we pass the law, it doesn't matter what the moratorium says, because the law's in effect.
The moratorium is to extend because you are currently deciding on the law. If you pass the law, you're done.
That's in the mor, that's in the moratorium?
The mor, yes, because the new law would replace.
I just wanna, sorry, clear it up quickly. So in the resolution, there's a sunset that's been, oh, Kaylee Bianchini, senior planner, I just wanted to know, just to clear up any confusion. So the moratorium, the very last portion
Automatically, yeah.
Correct. Upon the adoption of a new ordinance.
That's what I was asking.
So it would expire on
It's in there.
Okay, so there is an automatic sunset provision. That's what I was asking about. Okay, then we're good. Because what I didn't want, is I didn't want us to pass a law and then it didn't sunset, and then we'd have two months where nobody could build them, even though they were legal.
Absolutely.
We're smarter than
Very good point, that's why it's in there.
Love that. Thank you, Mary.
All right.
Please think of my Christmas.
So Councilwoman Herrick and Hamud, continuing your offer and support?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Mr. Clerk, hearing and seeing none. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-six, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick, adopting the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Dearborn and the International Alliance of Three Theatrical Stage Employees Local 38, effective December 6, 2022 through June 30, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Dearborn and IATSE Local 38 herein the union. On February 8, 2022, the Michigan Employees Relations, or MERC, certified an election result, which is case number 21-K2071RC, and recognize that IATCE Local 38 as an exclusive bargaining representative with respect to pay, wages, hours, employment, working conditions, and other conditions of employment for all part-time stagehands or events or performances at and hosted by the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center, and this is requesting an immediate effect. Councilwoman Herrick?
I have a question for the administration. I would ask the HR director, but it appears she's not here this evening. In negotiating this contract with this employee group, was the HR department included, and was the Civil Service Commission or the Civil Service process? I'm not an expert in HR, so I don't know exactly how that works, but were they involved in negotiating this contract?
So what I can tell you is your charter appoints me to do the bargaining, not the human resource director. HR's always consulted in the bargaining as far as benefits, pays are structured, they're always referred to, they're a resource.
And that hasn't been discussed yet regarding these positions?
I don't know what you mean hasn't been
The pay and benefits for those positions has not yet been discussed?
They're aware of this pay structure.
The HR department?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about civil service?
So these are part-time employees, they are not in the classified service, so this does not go to civil service. That's why you don't see the typical civil service approval and then council. This goes directly because they're part-time employees outside of the classified service.
Okay. So I just wanted to understand that, and the difference being that they're part-time. And then my other question is, was, were, were all of our employee job descriptions taken into consideration when negotiating this? Is it possible there are employees in other departments other than actually working in the theater that would be eligible based on their job descriptions to be part of this union?
So, no. So we had this when the election was, went forward back in January, so we do have a full-time individual that works out of the Performing Arts Center. They're in STP, so this unit only encompasses the part-time employees, not the full-time employees. That would require a unit clarification petition, and they would likely be unsuccessful to pull those employees from STP. And the job specs that we used were the specs that we currently use for positions that are similar through bargaining with the union. So the two, there's three positions, one's more of a manager, and then you see the two job specs attached to the back of the agreement.
Okay, I'm maybe misunderstanding you, or you're misunderstanding me. In other departments, such as CDTV, where we have camera operators who work with video equipment and sound equipment, similar to might be in the theater, would, might those employees be eligible to be in this union if they're part-time?
They'd, so when a new position comes in, you can either put the new position in or the union can file a unit clarification petition. So if you have a part-time position that the union believes is either currently in or the member believes to be currently in, you file a petition with MERC, and the city and the union go through a process as to whether to voluntarily include them or hold a hearing.
Okay.
That would be the process. So the short answer is, I don't know. It would depend what the union believed to be the case and how similar the duties.
Please also understand that within this contract, there's also a geographic border of the Ford Performing Arts Center.
That's, I mean, yeah, Jeremy, I think
Which is very distinct of where
Oh, okay, okay.
other employees operate out of. This is strictly for services rendered at the FPAC.
Okay. And Jeremy's our expert in union negotiations and things, so if we had somebody, would it be an issue, would they have, the union members potentially have a reason to complain? I don't want
Grievance.
Grievance if somebody who had a similar, did some similar job things, came into their building but weren't actually working on the stage, but were maybe videotaping?
Yeah, so the claim would be a bargaining unit erosion grievance. Could they gri, yeah, they can gripe anything under a labor agreement. There's no bargaining unit erosion provision in this contract, and the contract specifically provides that this agreement does not hinder the scope of work of other full-time employees or part-time in other units. So if somebody comes in to perform work within that jurisdiction, a city employee, it does not preclude them from doing so.
So CDTV would be permitted to film inside the FPAC?
Okay.
Without being griev
Thank you for translating, Mr. Mayor.
Thought I said that.
I actually did. It was a
Legally.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, that's kind of, I just wanted to make sure that that was all being taken into consideration.
This is more, think of like, you know, any events we have at the Ford Performing Arts Center, this union is the preferred and who we use, and then obviously the right structure that's created. Anything on the premise, if we have to expand, we go through the union to try to bring in more members from the outside. Anything outside of the FPAC, though, the rules don't apply, and so we can go and contract outside.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item twenty-seven, resolution in need of offering support revoking the pledge of excess assets of Chapter 21 Pension Fund.
I have, I already have. Mr. Clerk, the offer is by myself and supported by Councilwoman Paris. So on March 22, 2022, this body approved the council resolution 3-17322, which pledged excess assets of Chapter 21 Pension Fund as reviewed and approved by both the city's actuary, Gabriel Roder Smith, and the city's auditor, Plant Moran, on Chapter 23 Pension Fund upon death of the last beneficiary of Chapter 21. The council had meeting with stakeholders and was informed that the pledge was not necessary for budgetary aspect, and therefore, the council now desires to revoke this pledge and the council resolution of 3-17322 with immediate effect. So this is more just a cleanup item. It was a budgetary aspect that the council had done, and I know that Councilwoman Paris has talked about it. I had talked to our city attorney. It could have been left as is, but to clean up, we decided to revoke it. It can be, just so everybody knows, any action done by a council can be redone by a council. Since it was no longer necessary, we felt it was better just to remove it at this time. Councilwoman Paris, you have any questions or comments on it?
I appreciate your comments, Council President. You know, this was taken before the pension board of Chapter 23, the Board of Trustees, and actually was denied, you know, back a number of months ago. And this is, as you stated, a more of a cleanup issue, instead of letting it linger for a period of time and people forgetting. And that's why I brought it up, that like to clean up the language and just take this off the books and pulling it, as we've decided to do, or bringing forward to our council members for, for further action. So I appreciate that we're finally doing something with this.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to clarify, the pension board serves at the pleasure, you know, of the city, and it was the city's opinion that it was lawful as stated, and we made a decision as a group that there was no sense for our own city to, you know, sue our, our board. It was not necessary for a budgetary aspect, so that's why I decided to be withdrawn. I just want to make sure it's abundant, that it's clear, that there was no resolution on whether this was lawful or not lawful, or whether we could have forced it upon the board or not. That issue has not been resolved. We decided it was not necessary, and we do appreciate our council appointee for coming up with some type of resolve to make it work. But I just want to make sure for the record that that's the case, there was no, at this point, the best thing to do is to withdraw it, since we're not gonna have, there's no impact on it. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item?
If I may, Eric, if I may.
Yes.
I just, I know back when this first started, there was a figure attached, $1.9 million.
I'm sorry?
And 1.9 million was the figure attached at the starting of the budget process. This says, just says excess funds. It worries me that you mean, because there's a lot of excess funds in 21.
Right.
As you well know, say, it's a lot.
That's right.
So I just, should it say the 1.9 million, not just excess funds?
Well, just to clarify, Mr. Romer, you can clarify. I read the ordinance. The ordinance is, was specifically and lawfully drafted to say excess funds. We noted in the clause where the whereas, that it was about $18 million.
Yeah.
And that, let me finish, and that there was never a 1.9 million. It was, it was an excess of eight
It's enumerated.
Okay, but there was an ex Okay, Mr. Romer, do you want to explain?
Yeah, Councilman, you're confusing the two, the excess assets was not 1.9 million, that was the savings to the ARC.
That's right.
So what the pledge passed was to account for the excess assets, which at the time, I believe, was about $18 million.
$18 million.
So that was the pledge, that's what they're revoking. The savings was 1.9 million to the ARC.
Right. But the resolution, I did, I read this very carefully. The resolution, and the Councilman Abraham had brought this up, I think, at the hearing, that it was specifically had to be worded as excess, because we wanted to make sure that it remained 100% funding. So the excess happened to be at that day approximately $18 million, but it has been revoked, so.
Thank you.
That's the savings.
Right.
Yeah, that's the saving, that's not the issue.
Right, that's not the panel's
That's not the issue, yeah. So just want to make sure.
My recommendation, if I may
Yes.
to outgoing city council president pro temp, is to just address this through your legislation that permits the municipality to take excess funds above 125%. That's a closed system with less than 50 folk left in the system, that we can take those assets, move them, and that way, there's no debate over whether or not
We're still encouraging her to stay on. You know, you're not helping.
I'm just, you know.
That's very good. No, that is, that is
You get to request 10 pieces of legislation this month.
I know.
If you can make it one of them, it's, you know, it's worth $1.9 million at least.
We'll have a conversation.
The thing, Mayor, is, as you know, there's not too many cities that are 100, 300 and 400% overfunded.
Correct. Which is why they're more than likely to advance the legislation.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you actually make it a unique carve-out.
You're right. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
And the majority.
That's true. Any other questions or comments on this item? And thank you, Councilwoman Paris, because I do believe that you helped bring it forward so we can get it wrapped up. Hearing and seeing none. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 28, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Paris, requesting concurrence in the appointment of James Eddy to the Commission of Disability Concerns with a term ending June 30, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a recommendation to approve the appointment of James Eddy to serve on the City of Dearborn Commission of Disability Concerns for a three-year term. James Eddy will be a member-at-large, and his term will end June 30, 2025. As all commissioners, we thank them for their ability to serve these non-paid voluntary boards, and we do appreciate them very much. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. Perhaps it was emailed to us but not added to our binder. I think we asked for a background on Mr. Eddy, and did we receive that?
So the individual in question did not have a resume. It's been a long time since he's actually had a resume or had access to his resume.
One of those situations.
Could somebody summarize what he brings to the table then for us? I mean, I'm sorry, I don't know him, I'm not meaning to be argumentative, but I'd like to know a little bit about him.
Well, it's a at-large, yeah, I mean, it's a term.
So I apologize, we actually tried several times to try to get. Zaynab Hussein, Chief of Staff, we've actually interviewed Mr. Eddy in person. He unfortunately doesn't have a resume, it's been a while since he was employed, but I think for a lot of our residents, which Judge James is, he wants to give back to his community and using his capacity. He actually served on the Veterans Disability Council with, let me get this wrong, Justice Bernstein, before he became a justice. And on that disability commission, he was able to work with a team of individuals who were very passionate about thinking of how creative ways of bringing veterans, disabled veterans, and putting them back to work, and thinking about some of the unique qualities that they bring to the table, but also how we can make modifications to ensure that the workforce is accommodating to them as well. So he brings that unique perspective, which blew my socks off when I, when I met with him. Dearborn resident for a very, very, very long time, sits on a few different charitable organizations, but for him, this really set, really hit home because of the work that he did with Justice Bernstein.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Of course.
Justice Bernstein brings a good, good part for us, yeah, absolutely, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing is seen, none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, we have a walk-on item, item twenty-nine, resolution in need of offer and support awarding a contract purchase to Westbourne Jeep, the only bid in the amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars for a police vehicle to be used for.
Offered by Councilman Abraham. Offered by Councilman Abraham, and supported by Councilwoman Herrick. The police department will be using this vehicle for surveillance and enforcement operations role based on nature of the surveillance and activity. It is necessary to obtain a new vehicles on a regular basis to maintain anonymity. It is also effective to have surveillance vehicles blend in with normal traffic. The requested amount is forty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and takes immediate effect in order to get the vehicle placed in the lead time of ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Any questions or comments? I also believe this is funded through our drug enforcement program. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Nothing further from the clerk's office.
All right. I'm going to open up the council first. I just have a couple things, try to get through here quick. I know that everybody, hopefully, everybody had a great holiday season, and I know we're coming, this is the last scheduled meeting televised, so I wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas, New Year and holiday, whatever you celebrate at that time. It's always a great time. I'm in the phase where my kids come home from college and I actually get to see them, pretty good thing, once in a while, see how the tuition is going and what they're actually doing. So it's, it's a great time. I wish everybody a great holiday time. It really is a festive time. I want to really appreciate what the city has been doing as far as the work they've been doing on the holiday season. I definitely can say that it's made a big difference. The Christmas tree, lighting was an absolute, the Grinch, even the chief was involved, it was great. It was a great program, and I just want everybody to know that the City of Dearborn wants to look forward to two thousand and twenty-three, and I wish you guys all a great Happy New Year. Finally, I just wanted to congratulate my colleague, Councilwoman, Council President Pro Tem, Erin Burns, on her election to the State House. I know she's going to do a fabulous job, as Councilman Abraham had alluded, we'd love to keep her. I know that her parents are here, and I don't, just maybe we could get a shot of them and thank them for raising such a great young lady. She's doing a fabulous job, and I'm sure you're very proud of her. I just have one question, because your daughter has always said that you like to ride your bike, Mr. Burns, around the area, and I'm wondering if we're going to be seeing you on the Lansing streets now, instead of on the Dearborn. All right. You're not going to go that far, all right. Well, we assured the best, and we do wish, we will see Mr. Enos, who was elected by the people on the eight spot, and that's our normal course. That happened, I think, when Mr. Clerk had left to the State House, and Councilman Bazey took over, because that is a subject that is happening right now. I know my colleagues sometimes like to say that, Councilman Paris, that the Charter Commission is taking up right now. I think this is the right method. We are having a vacated seat, and the next seat goes by the next person by our charter currently. I hope that remains in there. And Mr. Enos has been coming to the council, been working with our staff, and is getting up to date. Could not make it tonight, will be here for the meeting on the fourteenth, as well as the New Year. So I want to welcome him, we will officially welcome him at the first new meeting. That's all I have for everybody, so, council? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I too want to congratulate my colleague, our Council President Pro Tem, Erin Burns. I've been proud to serve with her since we both were elected five years ago to council, and she has stood true to herself and to the people that supported her with her clear vision of making progress in our city, and she's just been always looking out for the residents here in Dearborn, but now she's going to go serve us in this new role at the state level. She got a couple suggestions tonight from our former state representative, the mayor. So I think, we've got, we've got a power team up here, so I wish her all the best, but we are certainly going to miss you here at this table and at all of our meetings and here around town, because you've been a wonderful partner to work with here.
I'll come back to bug you, don't worry.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Paris?
I, I have a couple other things, I have a couple other things, I'm sorry, too. I wanted to wish well to Jack Tate, our Director of the Dearborn Historical Museum. He's been having some health challenges, and he may be watching right now. I encouraged him to watch the council meeting this evening, because he wanted to be here. We have, on our consent agenda, which we vote on all the items in the consent agenda at once, but there's a position that's going to be, turn into a full-time position at the museum, and the folks there at the museum are so dedicated to their work, and they've done, made terrific progress in the last couple of years, as Jack has been the executive director, or the acting director there. And so I wish Jack well, and I think my colleagues have all been asking about how he's doing, so thank goodness he's at home right now and resting as he should be. On another note, today here at the Dearborn Administrative Center, we lit the torch with the help of a student from Snow Elementary.
Snow Elementary.
Yeah, Snow Elementary.
No.
And so the mayor welcomed him, and we lit the torch for the United Way Torch Drive. And for anyone who's received services from United Way, they just have so many partnerships and services available that anyone who's in need knows that they can turn to United Way and their two-one-one telephone number. If you know somebody in need of any kind of assistance, they have hundreds of services and partnerships available. So thank you to the United Way, and thank you to everybody who helps support the United Way and their partner organizations. Speaking of supporting good causes, tis the season. You probably saw the Goodfellows out last weekend. The mayor, our police and fire chiefs, a lot of the staff here were out selling the Goodfellow newspapers. I was, I was at my duty station up at Leon's, I've been doing that for about thirteen years now, and so toys will be delivered to kids closer to the Christmas holiday, thanks to the generosity of the people who've donated their time to the Goodfellows and those who supported. And I just, I'm always glad to meet people, and when I'm at Leon's, they have a time to talk, as opposed to if they're driving by in their car and making donation. And every year, I get at least one person who is very generous in a donation and talks about how the Goodfellows impacted their life, when, as, as a child, their family was going through a tough time, and, you know, parents who don't know how they're going to make ends meet, and they're able to provide a happy holiday, thanks to the efforts of the Goodfellows, going back nearly a hundred years. So thank you to everybody who participated and supported that. And ongoing right now, Toys for Tots is collecting toys with the Marine Corps, and I know there are numerous drop-off points in our city buildings, but the police department is kind of the headquarters for Toys for Tots here in Dearborn. So they're looking for new unwrapped, or unwrapped new toys to be delivered to those points, and they will be distributed to families in need in our city and in our region. And with that, I just wanted to wish everybody a healthy, happy holiday season, Christmas, and a wonderful two thousand and twenty-three as we enter the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo some of the sentiments that I am wishing Councilwoman Burns the best in her future endeavors, and thank you for your service. I wishing everybody a happy holiday and Merry Christmas, but I want to also make sure that people understand we have a big change in our council meetings coming up after January first. Our first meeting of the year will start at seven P.M. So our committee of the whole, that is the Thursday, that sets the agenda for the Tuesday regularly scheduled council meetings, will now be at seven P.M. So just being aware of it, don't tune in at seven-thirty and wonder what's going on, that the meeting is already going on. I appreciate people's involvements in our boards and commissions and volunteering for the, the city in various ways. But last but not least, think during the holidays, how we can be kind and helpful to one another. Look to our police and fire, our dispatchers, our DBW crews, a lot of first responders, emergency workers that work during the holidays, they have families too. Let's try not to use the resources too much by keeping our driving habits good during the holidays, and not drinking and driving, and just looking out for each other. So it's been a privilege this last year in serving you as a council member, as I'm sure that our other council members will also say, but thank you, and best to all of you for a new year coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Abraham?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to continue to send off to Councilwoman Burns. It's rare that somebody comes in, young and ambitious, and holds true to your, your compass, and you've done that over the last five years. And at the same time, I feel really privileged that you've taught at least me, and I think the rest of the council, a lot of valuable lessons, and I could just tell you that it's, again, with mixed emotions, that you're moving up and onward, but your position on this council, I could tell you, you will be missed, and I appreciate all your service and tutelage, and it's been a great time.
She moves up, does that mean I move downward?
Thank you, Councilman.
I think so.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so I guess actually I have similar words as Councilman Abraham, so I do remember when you were first selected, because, I mean, we were all very enthusiastic. I remember Council President introduced me to you at the time, and you've done a great job in your time on the council. And, I mean, without you, there were a lot of things that I know we wouldn't have been able to accomplish, so I appreciate all of that, and, you know, I look forward to, kind of what the mayor alluded to, seeing what you do in the majority.
Yeah.
In Lansing, because, I mean, as, just like you had your one year here, where we got a lot of work to do, and we got a lot done, I think you guys have a lot to do at the state level, and so good luck with that.
Thank you.
But luckily, we've trained you here, I'm sure, and on the, how to get things done really quick, so, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing what, what the future holds for you, and we really appreciate your service here to the city.
Thank you. Anything else from my colleagues?
I guess I have a few.
Councilwoman Burns, okay, absolutely.
Thank you, Council President. Oh, so this is my last official Tuesday council meeting. I have lived in this building for the past five years, as many of us have, or longer, and I have loved every single minute of it, even those four-hour committee of the whole meetings. I found joy in those. You know, I ran back in two thousand and seventeen along with Councilwoman Herrick, really because there's just no place in the world that means more to me than Dearborn. Sorry. A tissue.
Yes.
I told myself I wasn't going to cry, and I'm like, the first thing I say, of course, thank you.
Yes.
Of course, I wear mascara tonight, so I do genuinely need a tissue. Thank you. Oh, you know, I mean, my parents are here tonight, and, you know, they raised me on Knuckle Street in the house they've been in almost forty years. You know, I think from growing up there to graduating from St. Alphonses, I've really been blessed, took hold Dearborn home, and even more blessed to serve all of our residents, who are my friends and my neighbors on city council. And really, my goal has been to serve, not just with a strong work ethic, but really to serve with authenticity, and I hope that I've shown you over the past five years, not only what's on my mind, but more importantly, what's in my heart. I've learned so, so much from my colleagues past and present, from our city staff. You know, Council President Sereni, I'll never forget, I think, your commitment to just getting things right from the start, getting it right on the first try. Councilwoman Herrick, your passion for the arts and culture, and anytime I need to know if there's a city event going on, I'm going to call you, so be ready. And Councilwoman Paris, your passion for process and communication with the residents. I know we've run together a couple of times, and I've really just appreciated your support and your friendship throughout. Councilwoman Hamud, your passion for all things engineering, Ford Motor Company, I always know where you stand on an issue, and I always appreciate our conversations. And last but certainly not least, I know Councilman El-Sawafi isn't here tonight, so I'll, I'll reach out to him. Certainly, I appreciate his friendship and his service to our country and our city. But our dean, Councilman Abraham, your mentorship and your friendship has meant so much to me. I remember when I first ran, you were the first person to meet with me, and you told me that you believed in me and you thought I could do it, and that just, it meant everything to me, and it, it really helped me to believe in myself, so I'll always remember that. You know, and I think just overall, I've really learned in the past five years that we are at our best when we stand together, when we listen to and respect one another, even and especially when we don't agree, and I think that's so important, especially in the times that we find ourselves living in. And so I hope that that's something that we all take to heart in our city and beyond. You know, and I'm so excited, I think, for the future of our city. Mayor Hamud, I know you and your team will continue to innovate and take service to a new level, which you're already doing. Our council will lead through diversity of thought and a really strong commitment to our residents. I look forward to the continued service of all of my colleagues, and to incoming Councilman Gary Enos. And of course, I will continue to serve Dearborn, and now Dearborn Heights, which I'm excited about, in Lansing, just in a new capacity, and just know that everyone in Dearborn will always be on my mind and in my heart, wherever I may go. So I'd just like to leave you with, I think, two of the simplest yet most powerful words I know, which are, thank you. Truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
That's it. Thank you very much. That concludes from our council. Administration, Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Strange to go after her remarks, but I don't get to bid her very well until after. Council President Pro Tem, what I would tell you, the one piece of advice I would offer you, as you go tackle the giant that is Lansing, you know, Lansing is different in that it's made up of windows. And the greatest window there is, is the window of opportunity. And when you sit on that House floor, those windows of opportunities are going to come up in mere seconds, and it's going to take a trained eye and a trained legislator to understand when that window of opportunity opens up, and that means that you have the opportunity to strike, to bring home a big win for the city. And I have the full confidence in you that hopefully you're going to bring back those wins, starting with that one point nine million that we think we can deliver. But I'm excited for you, excited for the whole team of legislators that we have emerging in Lansing, and know that you'll all work together to help deliver results, to help move Dearborn forward. So I look forward to our continued partnership in a different dimension. I know that I have FOMO, mad FOMO, that I trained my gavel hand for five years, but never got to hold the gavel, but excited for you to do so.
I'll do that in your honor.
Yeah, thank you. Next, I want to thank Dean Al-Ali, the owner of OSP. He delivered and provided Thanksgiving meals to over one hundred and fifty of our first responders, including our police officers, as well as our firefighters. And we got the note from one of our captains at one of our firehouses that this was the first time in their two decades of service that the administration had ever partnered with a, with a local business to provide them Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving, and I think that means the world, and hopefully, it's a new tradition that we can set, and we really want to just thank OSP and Dean Al-Ali for his generosity time and time again. I can't believe that I'm coming up on one year in office. I mark it with, obviously, the birth of my daughter. You know, she just turned one on Saturday. And it's, it's hard to believe, you know, as I watch her grow, I watch myself, obviously, grow, hopefully, in this marriage ship. And we have so much to reflect on and be proud of over this last year, and I mean this jointly, council and the administration, all my appointees and the residents. But in addition to accounting our accomplishments, I'm that person that counseled all the things that we didn't get right, and so know that we have a lot yet to work on and hopefully to improve for the residents, and I'm really excited for two thousand and twenty-three. And so to all the residents, to all my, to all the council, to all my appointees, to everyone here, wishing you all a happy Thanksgiving that passed, I didn't get to wish you that, a Merry Christmas that's coming, a Happy New Year, a happy holiday season, and really just hope you get to spend the time with those that you love most. I'm excited to spend a little more time with, with my wife and my daughter and my family. I know you'll all get to spend that time as well. And that's, that's really it. Excited for two thousand and twenty-three. Hopefully, that means our, our foot's going to be on a gas pedal, a Shelby Mustang.
All gas, no brakes.
But we're going to be hopefully moving very diligently, and accomplishing the things that the residents really want us to accomplish. So thank you for, really a blessed first year.
Well, Mayor, thank you for those comments, I appreciate it, and there's, so we won't be saying it's only been sixty days or ninety days, hundred days. That's it, the year's over, probation's over. All right, sounds good. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything to leave for the council, to leave for the residents?
A Christmas greeting. Merry Christmas to everyone out there. It's been a great year for, for the city, and I believe the clerk's office as well. And stay close to the ones you love and the ones that love you during the holiday season, the Christmas season, and the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Councilwoman Burns, final comments?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge our council staff. We have two of our members here tonight. They really just hold down the fort for us, do a phenomenal job, and we are very blessed to have them. So thank you all, and for our folks who are not with us physically tonight, just thank you for everything that you bring to the office, to our team, and to the city, and know that you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to open it up to our public comment. I'd like to start with the gentleman, Hushain Jalani. Not sure if he's still here. Okay, at this time, there was a gentleman had filled out a card that wanted to speak on an item that was part of our consent agenda. So if they're not here right now, we are opening up the, to public comment now, this is our final public comment for this meeting. If you have any comment to the council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, but you have a three-bit limitation. You want it this time? Okay, let the record.
Oh, no, my parents are going to make me cry. Oh, no. Oh, no. I should not have worn mascara.
There's your public comment, there you go.[1781.42] All right.
We are a crying family, apparently. Let it be known to the public. Sorry.
To the public, Mr. and Mrs. Burns, thank you very much for coming up. And we were good, as, as everybody you heard, it's going to truly miss your daughter, and we know she's going to do bigger and better things. So we know it's bittersweet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Going to do great. Thank you very much. Cannot beat mom and dad. So we do appreciate. Any other people here from the public wanting to address matters of the city? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. And just kind reminder, you have a three-minute limitation.
822712 Nona. I have nothing of substance to say, other than I think the council has done a lot of really amazing stuff this year. It's been a very exciting year to be in Dearborn, and thank you for everything you've done, and looking forward to 2023. Thank you.
Well, that's so thoughtful. Thank you, Janet.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other?
Positive comments?
Person would like to come forward.
Council President, I just want to make one.
Councilman Abraham?
One suggestion. I know you control the gavel, but in recognition of Council President Pro Tem's last meeting, I suggest that she closes out her meeting tonight.
I would, I would, I would think that would be very fitting. It's a good suggestion. So we'll pass it over. Councilwoman Briggs, turn on your microphone. Make sure there's nobody. Mayor, you had something you wanted to add?
No, I was just going to say, I think Salah Ali looked very jolly today, and I just wanted to recognize that. We appreciate it. That's all. Thank you so much.
I, I, I agree. And he didn't have nothing to come up and say, so we're in good shape.
All right. Anything else from the public? Anything else from council or the administration? All right, hearing, no other comments. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year, everyone. For council and mayor, I want to get a picture of everybody, like, down here, if we can, really quick.